Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. It's good to see all these shiny faces out there. I like to see the shimmering smile out there. Why don't we wait on our lawyer, Mr. Campbell? We had a meeting this morning where Dr. Tate did a reminder for all of us about former President Jimmy Carter. And I would like for her to repeat that at this meeting at this time. Repeat that at this meeting. What she did this morning for President Carter.
Hello, everyone. I want to take just a moment to honor the passing of our former president. Today is National Memorial Day for him. And I will recognize the importance of the way he did fire to this passing in his presidency. So his work and playing promoted disabilities and the advocacy of disabilities. It was really important. So as we continue the work with our students, we remember that. We honor him, we remember him, and we honor his words.
Thank you very much for that, Dr. Tate. In my young years, I had forgotten all the work that he had done for ADA. And I'm very glad of that reminder. I do think we have a quorum. I'm not sure about Wallace. Oh, Wallace is here. Hey, Wallace. You snuck in the back door. Okay, so we do have a quorum. The agenda has been sent out to everyone. Does anybody have any changes, additions, or subtractions to the agenda? I do. Oh, yes, I do. There will be an additional record of minutes for December 27th that we will approve at the correct time. I was very glad to get from our interim principal, Sandy Manning, a list of students that had perfect attendance for the fall. And at this time, I'd like for Ms. White to read those out, please.
So those perfect attendants for Fall '24, '25. Well, that's not true because there's not any Fall in '25 right now. But anyway, Brock Jones, Jay Uraina, Christian Paul, Savannah Grimes, Justice Gibbs, Eli Lakowski, Jane Marchant, and Zeke Mathis.
That's wonderful, wonderful. And since the students have been sent home early because of the incumbent weather, Ms. White and I will come by the first day they're back next week and congratulate these students for perfect attendance. The other thing we'd like to recognize is our Students of the Month. And we'll read those out, but again, we will come by and see them personally next week.
So pre-K to second grade is Yana Lipscomb. Grades 325 was Natalie Magana. Grades 6 through 8, Wilder Sanchez. And grades 9 through 12, Isaiah Vaught.
And congratulations to those students. We appreciate that input from you all. Yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, we honored the Departments of the Month from last month, and that was dietary and the administrative staff for their hard work right after Hurricane Helene. And that was a wonderful time to get to know those staff members and to associate with them, and we really appreciated doing that. And for the month of January, we would like to honor the Elementary Department and DEF+ for their wonderful work on the live museum. That was terrific. And we will be getting in touch with you as to how we can get you all together for lunch one day soon before the end of the month. Okay, we have several sets of minutes to look at. We have August 1st. You want to do these all at one time, or you want to take them one at a time? Or we can sit and read them all? August 15th, these are closed sessions minutes. August 21st, September 5th, which was a remote meeting. December 5th, which was a regular business meeting. And December 27th, which was a special call meeting. Does anybody have any additions or anything about these minutes that they need to correct? And if not, do I have a motion to accept all of those sets of minutes?
Being closed session. That'll be more appropriate, just because we're in the closed session. So we had a board meeting on August 15th, and we also had a meeting on January 15th.
Sorry for interrupting.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Nikki? Do I have a second?
Second, Jimmy.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. And do I have a vote? All of those in favor of approval, all these sets of minutes? Wait a minute, hold it. Tammy's got a question.
This is Kate. Okay, wondering if there is... Can you all show the windows of the office on it? So we can try to see. Mr. Thomas, sorry, my fault. Some of the individuals are going to open this on the screen. How you close yours, anything, because I can't see when there's some video files on the screen. If you can tell me anything, Nikki?
Okay. Aaron's working on that.
Aaron said we have removed people, but we can't change the view that's in the... So the more people who have video files, like the smaller they are, and I'm just knowing that soon you can take all video files and remove something. But you can't with hands. Okay, I'll leave that my hand there. She can. Aaron said, Kate, you can't put in as many people as you can. If that makes the video a little bit bigger. Oh, you're serious, Mr. Patrick. Okay, Aaron, thank you. It's the three dots, person's name. Aaron said, who are the three dots on the video you have? It looks at all that person's name, all that person's... Sixty. You can tag in for me. Kate's looking. Then we can just shoot you the shot. Aaron said, check on whoever else we find that was missing. Okay, all right, so now Kate, I'm looking for a second. I don't see Wallace. Wallace disappeared. Aaron said, Wallace disappeared. Okay. All right, this is Danny Sajwale. Thank you so much.
Okay, we were in the middle of the vote for our approval of minutes. If we could, a show of hands, all approved minutes, raise your hand. Okay, before I turn the meeting over to Mr. Campbell for our legal updates, I would just want to take a moment to recognize Mr. Patrick's upcoming pending retirement effective February 1st and say that we wish him the very best. He's been a valued employee, and we do hope that all of his endeavors in the future are successful. We have extended to him the possibility of the dates he will be back from sick leave on January 17th. And we have extended to him the possibility of... We have extended to him the possibility of a retirement reception during the days that he will be on campus. And we're just awaiting verification of doing that, just so the staff is aware. So with that, as I said, we wish him well, and we look forward to finding out his next endeavor. And so at this time, as most of you know, Senate Bill 382 passed by default. That sounds strange, doesn't it? But Mr. Campbell's going to give us our updates for that.
Very good, and this is Chris. Good afternoon to everybody. Sorry I was a few minutes late. So this is actually a follow-up from the last board meeting where I gave you an update on the passage of Senate Bill 382 after the General Assembly overrode the Governor's veto. I felt that this document was very important for everyone to have, including the staff and any stakeholders for NCSD, to understand the effective dates because it's kind of complicated with all those different moving parts in the effective dates. So I've put into one document when things are effective, and I thought I would just hit the highlights with you and see if there are any questions. The first thing I want to point out is that all of these effective dates apply equally to the Eastern North Carolina School for the Deaf and to the Governor Morehead School for the WINE. So it's all three schools that are covered by these provisions. So the first point is that you will not complete the process of being a standalone state agency until at the latest July 1st of 2025. The law states that the Office of State Controller and Office of State Budget Management are to ensure that you are established as state agencies by no later than July 1st, prior to July 1st. Until then, Section B, you will continue to technically be administratively housed within DPI. But that doesn't change the fact that you have independent rule. This school is still run by your administration and overseen by the Board of Trustees. So DPI has no legal authority over you. You are just, as an administrative matter, part of DPI until July 1st of 2025. That you're going to continue to be covered by all insurances that apply to state employees through DPI. That the official title of Superintendent of Schools will not be effective until July 1st of '25. So you will continue to have interim director with Mr. Patrick's departure, or you could have a permanent director certainly to replace him, but you could also then have an interim until July 1st. But you will not use the term Superintendent of Schools until July 1st. And I believe what is posted right now also reflects that, that that position does not come into being, if you will, until July 1st of '25. Effective immediately, DPI, the Office of State Controller and Budget Management, and the Department of Administration are supposed to designate somebody to work with you on the transition. So updates on the governance issues. First of all, our firm is currently working with DPI to do the MOU that is required right now with DPI. That you have begun the state budget process, and we're going to talk about that more this evening. No other changes in school governance are really needed prior to July because they all went into effect July 1st to '24. And all three school directors at this point really need to request that the liaison be identified. Because again, that's going to be real important. If you go back, the legislature has said that Office of State Controller, DPI, Office of Budget Management, and the Office of Department of Administration are supposed to identify an individual that can work with all three schools to make sure everything is done by July 1st of '25. So that's really important. Coming on down under number two, at the bottom of the page, again, effective July 1st, you're supposed to have certain support continuing from DPI, but that's really no different than any other Board of Education. DPI is just going to be a consulting entity to you, a support entity to you, but they are supposed to help you facilitate purchase of insurance. So we'll be continuing to work the school with DPI personnel to make sure that you have appropriate insurance coverage. Effective immediately, you can purchase general liability and authors, officers, and directors' coverage, and we are working right now with a broker to finalize those quotes and bring those to you. That will go to Mr. Saunders Committee first, the budget and finance, so they can look at the numbers, they can look at those policies, but that's something that you can go ahead and enter into, effective immediately. Again, effective July 1st, you're going to be getting your support through the Department of Administration, and you're supposed to, surprise, have an MOU with the Department of Administration. So once we finish the MOU with DPI, we'll move on to the MOU with DOA, who will be your support entity to the extent you need them, starting July 1st. Effective immediately, you have all the amenities provided for, the State Board of Education, the Superintendent of Public Construction, any local Board of Education, any local administrative unit, and that extends to you and your employees. So you have all the state amenities that can apply to public officials. So that's a wonderful benefit. Again, effective July 1st, you're eligible to receive anything statewide from DPI, including grants. And then we get into a little bit more of the esoteric issues. Effective immediately, no employee of this, of the School for the Deaf may also be a member of the Board. So if you were to be an employee, then you are deemed to have resigned your Board membership. I do not believe that affects, or we expect it to affect anyone on this Board, but that's a new requirement. Also, what is a quorum? A quorum is a majority of the voting. So that has been confirmed. So we cannot conduct business unless we have a majority of the voting members of the Board having meetings. Effective July 1st, the following also occur, and these are dates that your interim director will be working with the board chair on. You've got several days that are going to apply, but the first one I wanted to point out because of your existing efforts for marketing. I think this is something this Board would be keenly interested in. As of October 1st, all school superintendents are required to notify parents of eligible students regarding the services of all three schools and to ask those parents if they will consent to release information to you to contact them with information. So any child that might be able to benefit from the services of this school, the local superintendent in all 115 school districts across the state of North Carolinas will be required to notify those parents about you and ask for consent to release their information to you so that you can call that parent, contact that parent about your services. Other public schools will also transfer data to you whenever a parent makes application and requests that that information be sent. So forms will be developed about that to be able to work with one of the school districts. So that'll be real important in your marketing efforts. Almost done here, effective immediately, you are responsible for free and public, free and appropriate public education, which is the hallmark, you all know, of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. You're responsible for FATE once the enrollment process is complete. So if a student were to come to you from Avery County, Avery County would remain responsible for that child's special education until that child completed the enrollment process here at the school. So that was an important clarification. If a student is denied enrollment or that enrollment here at the school is revoked, then that parent can appeal to you, but that parent cannot file due process with the Office of Administrative Airens. It would just come to you as a Board, and that is effective immediately. And then finally, we got some new report dates. Of course we did. So by March 15th, you got a new J-Lock report. That one is your responsibility. This school, in coordination with DPI, must report to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee at the General Assembly regarding the implementation of all these new laws and identify, this is the important part, identify relevant issues and cost estimates for compliance. So these cost estimates are going to, a lot of trains running on simultaneous tracks. First of all, you're going to be submitting your budget request for effective July 1st of '25. At the same time, you're going to be working on a J-Lock report, which identifies those costs and why those costs are important. So again, I think budget and finance is going to play a huge role in this March 15th report as well because the same justifications that go with your budget request will also be cost estimates in the J-Lock report. And you are to request a contact with DPI to accomplish that requirement. We can assist with that if we need to. By May 1st, DOA, the Department of Administration, in consultation with you and with DPI and with the Department of Information Technology, is supposed to study the cost and positions that are needed to support you. So that's what DOA needs. Don't get confused. That's not what your school needs. That's what DOA needs to support you, and they are to make a report to J-Lock and to Physical Research on what those needs are. And then finally, and potentially most important for your financial future, is that the General Assembly has been relying a lot recently on this entity called the North Carolina Collaboratory. And the General Assembly has asked the North Carolina Collaboratory to work with all of you, all three schools, with DPI and with the Department of Administration, to do these three things. First of all, study your admin structure, your operations, and your policies, including the cost and positions that you need to support students, how to optimize the operation of your school to maximize educational outcomes and ensure student success and your independence. Those go hand in hand. And then number three, report those findings and recommendations for each school independently to J-Lock, the Joint Administrator, the Joint Legislative Committee, and to Physical Research Division of the General Assembly. So the General Assembly is really saying to this North Carolina Collaboratory, what does the future of the School for the Deaf look like? What is going to help them stay independent, which is what the General Assembly wants? What do they need to optimize the education of their students? And then the final question, and this should surprise no one, what do they really need as far as positions and... So you're going to be making a budget request for '25, '26, but I think the future of what you really need in large part is going to be based on the findings of the Collaboratory. So my recommendation would be that you look at, probably taking two existing committees, your Personnel Committee and your Budget and Finance Committee, and make them the point from the Board on responding to the Collaboratory, along with Dr. Todd and your administration. So that would just be a recommendation. That's not a legal recommendation, but those would be two committees that I think would probably fit in well with that. So I do encourage you to take that effort very, very seriously because I think the legislature is going to rely on the Collaboratory in large measure. Happy to answer any questions? Just to... Wallace, you have a question?
Wallace? Yes, I do, if you're ready for it.
I am. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Wallace. I just, I'm not sure if I missed it or didn't catch it, Chris, but did you say what the timing is for when the Collaboratory will start their work?
And this is Chris. The deadline for their report is May 1st. So they are supposed to start their work immediately. I'm glad you asked that question. Their deadline to report is May 1st of 2025, but they are free to start that whenever they want to. And that's why it's important to think of '25, '26 differently than '26, '27 forward. Because obviously, if they're not going to submit a report until May of '25, then that is not going to make a difference to next year's budget.
Thank you. And could you remind the Board when the deadline is for the budget request?
And I will put that back to Hannah because I haven't looked at that recently. She had to leave.
She's here.
January 17th, Wallace is what Hannah said.
Okay.
And I just want to kind of reinforce what Chris has said about the Collaboratory. In essence, we will probably be under a microscope for a while, and they'll be looking at every aspect of our school. So we need to always be aware that for now, someone is evaluating us every step. So, and there was one other question. Okay, when we, are we, the Board, Dr. Todd, who needs to contact and request, request a contact at DPI for us to finish up the reports?
And this is Chris. My recommendation is that Dr. Todd would be the one to do that, and I would also make a recommendation with a little R that she collaborate with her other two directors in doing that so that everybody's on the same page.
Okay, sounds good.
And I think it would be to contact, obviously, each of those agencies and ask for that release on the development report. And let me say too, as far as the MOU with DPI, we are not starting from scratch on that. The directors have already given a list of the things they were concerned about, so we'll just use that list as a draft MOU, and then Dr. Todd and the other directors can devise it. But that will take a whole amount of time to make it.
Okay. Does anybody else have some questions? No, Dr. Tate does, yes.
I've got a couple. First one. Are going to be... Be at us and then make these recommendations and change. We will maintain students, that family students, but there's this thing with what happens in this... And we're just going to be reminded that we need to make a guarantee this will be over for everybody today. And then the second day, coming back, they will get paid. They're in the... And then the second thing, coming back to the, to get paid, there would be a lot of doubts. People are thinking. Reminder to. People have heard for your permission, share, proceed with the chapter. Or that, people who need their impeachable students. And if there's a label of eligibility, then it's definitely be a primary. Because so far, significantly, people see that in the same area, um, ability, so that they can shuffle around a little bit. So I'm just going to play with my, do, do those. In regards to that. The information that you're going to share with, is not a student. Is that we just manage, that we have the legal, into the media, have had it, that we have helped pretty well. And then that's what they're paying to these parents. They're not really, those to decide whether the, describe.
Yes, uh, this is Chris, and I'm going to look at the exact language in the bill here in just a second as far as, as how the General Assembly phrased who is to be contacted. So I'll have an answer for you as far as what the law says in just a second. But, um, the reason I mentioned it as part of, of the marketing effort is I, I would think that you would want to have Dr. Todd and her staff help you come up with those materials to give to school superintendents, because the bare minimum is that the superintendent contacts parent and say, will you authorize us to release your name and contact information to NCSD? Well, a marketing effort would be, hey, parent, here is, here are the services. Here's what NCSD does. Here are a lot of things you might even consider. Do I have your permission to give your contact information? So you're exactly right. It can just be a check the box for these superintendents, or it can be part of your marketing efforts, but I would think you would need to give them those materials. So I think you're thinking right. Yeah. But I'll look real quick, y'all can continue in a minute.
And, Dr. Tate, thank you for that, because that is, that is very important to us going forward. And that, uh, it would be really nice if we were the ones providing the language for that. And, yeah, so, thank you for that. Um, does anybody have any questions on the legal updates from Senate Bill 382? Senate Bill 382 really did some good things for us as a school, for the boards and for our incoming superintendents. So, um, very glad of that. Uh, the one thing that we need to do next is to, in open session, full transparency with our school, do a board vote to appoint Dr. Kristen Todd as acting director during the time that Mr. Patrick is on sick leave and then as interim school director from, uh, that date.
February 1st.
February 1st until the end of school, which would be June 30th. But we'll take that all the way up to July 1st. So do I have a motion for that appointment?
He says no motion. Do you want to, just that, Dr. Kristen Todd will be interim director? So June 30th?
Whatever that sentence was.
And he said, whatever that sentence was.
And do I have a second to whatever that sentence was?
And Jimmy, second.
Okay. Uh, is there any discussion that needs to take place at this time? I think we did that before. All in favor of that, please raise your hand. And Dr. Todd, thank you very much for consenting to do this. It's, um, I've heard very good things, so. Um, okay, now we're going to go into.
Do you like the language?
Oh, yes, please do that.
Okay.
Chris is going to give us the correct language.
This is Chris, and I'm ready to read from chapter and verse. This is from Senate Bill 382, and here's what, uh, this is who the General Assembly identified as the group that needs to be given information by local school superintendents. And it says, "Superintendents of local administrative units shall require the following request for consent, along with informational materials provided by the school or the blind or the school for the deaf in the service area in which the LEA is located, be presented to parents or custodians of any children who are deaf or hard of hearing or are blind or visually impaired." So it does look like there is a mandate to provide the materials you come up with to every parent who is in that service area, and they do not distinguish between primary and secondary category of disability.
And that is huge. We'll just do one of these. Because that's really good. Okay. And we don't do additional discussions at this time? Okay, Wallace, would you like to do a business and finance, uh, update for us?
Yes, I'll be brief. We have not had a meeting of the Finance Committee since our last board meeting, but we do have our standing monthly meeting next Thursday morning. And needless to say, we'll be focused on, um, talking with Hannah about finalizing the budget request, which will be due the following day, uh, but also preparing for the, um, the J-Lock report and the other items that Chris mentioned earlier. Um, we're also really taking a close look at trying to determine whether we can, um, create some room in the budget to adjust certain positions from 10-month positions to 12-month positions in order to be able to compete more effectively in hiring some important roles on the staff.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Um, yes.
So this is Chris. We are all learning, and I'm looking to Hannah as I say this, we're all learning about the state agency budget request process. Um, I don't know if it would be inappropriate, it might be a good idea, if the board wanted to entertain delegating to Wallace's committee on behalf of the board to submit the initial budget request by the date. And that way, you don't need to re-meet as a board. I don't know that it's a legal requirement that the entire board vote on this initial budget request, but I do think it would be appropriate to delegate that to the Business and Finance Committee. And I'll repeat, as always, that every board member, in, in addition to the public, is welcome to attend those meetings. So if you have any concerns about delegating that to the committee, you can certainly attend that meeting and voice your concerns as well. But that, that may be a good idea, just so that Hannah can say that, that was approved by the Board of Trustees. And looking to Hannah to see if she thinks that's a good idea. She's nodding yes, so that, that's a recommendation.
And I do think that's part of that original bill we had.
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion to delegate to our Finance and Business Committee, uh, the responsibility of, um, submitting that budget?
I move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Amy, second.
Second, okay. Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor of delegating the Business and Finance Committee to, uh, take care of the budget? Raise your hand. And as Mr. Campbell said, those meetings are open, so, uh, any staff or anyone that wants to attend can surely do that. Okay, uh, Policy Committee.
Matt, I just didn't hear Wallace's vote on that, I'm sorry.
Wallace, did you vote in favor?
Well, I guess maybe I have a, a quick legal question. Is that something that, is there any reason the Chair of that committee should recuse himself from that vote?
Uh, this is Chris, no sir. You, you can vote. Uh, I think you probably have a duty to vote on this one.
Okay, then I'll, I'll vote in favor. And I'll also just remind the board while I've got the floor that, um, that meeting is at 9:00 a.m. next Thursday. Um, would love for you to attend if you can and be part of that discussion and vote. And maybe ask Tanya to make sure that all the board members have that invitation in case they don't already.
Okay, uh, Ms. White?
Policy Committee, we are, uh, up to date on all the policies that have been, uh, passed on to us from our legal team, so I have nothing to report.
And I do have a question for our lawyer. Uh, we had some requests for these policies immediately, if we can get them.
Okay. So this is Chris, we are now going to be moving to the Essential Student Policies, which is Section 4000 in the policy manual. And this request to address child abuse, neglect, those issues is in line with that. And just so everyone can sleep at night, I'll remind you that all of the previous policies of the school and the state are still in force until you adopt new policies. So it has always been a legal and a policy requirement to respond to child abuse, neglect those things. You do need a unique policy now that you're a standalone entity, and we'll be working on that, but rest assured that prior laws and procedures are still being applied with, when it comes to those issues. That's why you passed that gap filler that said you will continue to follow previous policy of the school, uh, until you get new policies in place. But those will be next.
Okay. You've got work to come in. Okay, thank you very much. Um, our ASL policy and procedure, uh, are we ready for that? Okay. Ms. Lee and, uh, Dr. Tate?
Do you want to introduce the communication policy? Yes, hi. This, I'm Kimberly Lee. So I work as sta, as the staff development instructor, ASL instructor here, so. We've set up a communication access policy, yay. They haven't had one for a while, that's really good, that we've got one now. We've got a committee working together, and we've got that set up. And that committee has really been working hard. They've made some revisions and some changes with the policies that apply to all staff. And, um, hope that all of the, uh, Board of Trustees will have an opportunity to review that policy. Or you have had the, the opportunity to review that policy? Okay, good, good. So.
Yes, sir.
Well, we recommend that the Board of Trustees vote on our recommended communication policy. And we suggest that you do that now, please.
Okay, and I will ask again, all the board members, you have had a chance to read through these policies and, um, they have done, uh, government's work. Uh, I mean, there's been a lot of consideration and concern that has gone into the development of this policy. I'm very proud of you. Thank you very much for taking the time and the effort to do that. Um, does anybody have any questions?
You're wel, you're welcome, it was our pleasure, he says.
I'm not sure it was a pleasure.
It really was my pleasure, I was happy to do it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any questions or discussions about anything that will be in this policy? And as I understand, if we vote today, it's immediately in effect. Yes, if we vote today, this policy becomes immediate, be in effect Monday morning. Okay? So do I have a motion to accept the ASL communication policies and procedures? Jimmy?
This is Jeannie, Jimmy. I so moved that the ASL policy, communication access policy, uh, be accepted.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Tammy, seconded too, and Mickey hasn't. Okay, uh, all in favor of the acceptance of this policy, please raise your hand. And with that, congratulations ladies, it has passed.
Hooray, hooray. He says, thank you very much.
Thank you. I know that was not easy. Yes, Donna?
Of exactly what was passed, but I can get it off the tab and share it with your board.
Yes. And I do believe that it would be beneficial to send out a hard paper copy to each staff member so that everybody has one and everybody is aware of what the policy says, okay? And Dr. Tate, will you give Tanya an official copy of what you have for that? Okay. Um. Okay, I'm going to make sure I had anything else. And Dr. Tate, we are to your part of the program with Human Resources.
Thank you. All right, this is Dr. Tate. So this morning, we had an HR committee meeting where we had several items that we discussed. Uh, we had a very positive discussion related to several different, um, strategies that we're looking at for HRs, I guess I could say recruitment, uh, for new staff and trying to figure out ways to pursue people to go ahead and join us here and be on our team. Uh, so we're trying to be a little creative and come up with some good ways to, to market that and, and grow our staff members and our support of our workers here. When we have a formal recommendation for that, we will bring that forward to the board's word vote. Secondly, we had a lot of discussion related to, uh, positions that could have an increase in salary pay. We have a lot of vacancies right now. And we are currently, um. Seeking applications and would also like to recommend maybe having some review of, uh, positions in our closed session, um, that we have vacant at this, at this time. But just wanted to be transparent about that conversation. But during the open session, I did want to, uh, just talk about the fact that we discussed the superintendent position, that app, um, that job position has been posted online and we are seeking applications for that. And, first of all, following any legal updates that we've gotten from Chris on that. And the timeline.
Tanya, do you happen to have that timeline?
Those duties.
So this is Tanya, and I'm sharing with Aaron, his concern, we're putting it on the screen, says that we will not interview the members participating personally, and they've been wanting to see us.
But we can't, we can't see them here.
We'll be able to if Aaron posts it on the screen, that's what your screen would be, and that's all they'll see as well. But I don't know if they'll be able to see interpreters that like the same.
So this is Chris, can we put it up on the screen for just a minute?
Just a minute.
And take it down?
And we're, yeah.
Hold discussion, hold it up there. Okay, why don't we do that when you're ready?
Aaron, are you ready to do that? Aaron, are you ready to do that?
And Tammy says.
Tammy can't see.
I cannot see it yet, Aaron.
Not there yet. There it is, there it is.
We'll have to scroll so you can see the most of it.
Aaron, scroll up and see if we can see the most of that. That's good.
When, when I sign that, I can't see her answer. I can't see her. I don't know what, what Tammy is saying.
At first you couldn't see the, the scroll up and we hadn't put it there yet.
If she's saying that, then I'll stand.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay, you can take it down now, Aaron, so that everybody can see. Okay, Chris.
So this is Chris. So part of building the airplane has also been trying to figure out how to post this position. And that took a little bit longer, uh, than I think all of us anticipated. So your current deadline for applications is January seventeenth. I think one of the things to have some discussion right now, and Leslie can, uh, join in the discussion. Again, in our experience, you don't get a lot of applications until the last minute. So I'm not recommending that tonight you extend the deadline beyond January seventeenth. But I will tell you that the application was not, has not been posted as long as we hoped it could be posted. And frankly, I don't know if that's a problem or not. So I think it'd be appropriate to Leslie to say, kind of talk to you about the process and whether she thinks you should proactively extend the deadline and how it looks on posting those issues.
And this is Leslie. So we reviewed this this morning in the HR committee. Currently, we're seeing over fifteen thousand reviews. They're on track. So we look, this is a review that says, not how far or anything like that, it's on track. We wouldn't go. But probably we have to. I know a lot of times we wait till the very last minute, so hopefully we can get more of it. If I notice that it's dropping, I may, I may maybe extend it. But at this point in time, I'd say that we need to go with our regular.
That's the recommendation that we stay on the timeline we're on now. Seventeenth is not that far away. Um. If we see that we would need to extend that timeline, could we call a board meeting to extend that?
What is the time?
Forty-eight hours. Forty-eight hours notice, so, uh, Leslie, we will depend on you to give us a heads up as what we need to do with that.
Absolutely. I will, uh. Can you watch it when we get closer to the speech? If there are any more reviews? But you can come and get it.
And in regards to that, uh, in the view of transparency, our principal candidate, who we were hoping would start on February one, has withdrawn. So we have reposted that position. And hopefully, we'll, uh, we'll get that position filled soon. Uh, anything else we need to?
Thank you.
Dr. Tate, do you have anything else you want to add at this time?
I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay, um. Before we leave HR, I would like to, um, say that we, um, had talked about the concerns for an EC director and, uh, staying compliant. And Dr. Tate has graciously agreed to take that test and get licensure, so.
No, no.
Dr. Tate, no, Dr. Todd.
Did not.
Please excuse me. I'll be back in just a minute. I have to crawl out from under the table. I'll just hide away under it. Uh, Dr. Todd has graciously agreed. Well, if he needs a study partner, Dr. Tate will help him. Uh, graciously agreed to take that test and, uh, hopefully that will be completed soon. And then we will also have an EC director. Uh, Jimmy, marketing?
Yes, well, we have finally been able to set up our schedule and we will have our first meeting next Friday, uh, at eight AM. It'll be a small group getting started and then we can add more as we need, but for right now, we're just working with a small group and again, it'll be January seventeenth, that's Friday morning, next Friday morning, and it'll be the third Friday of every month. And that's, we're keeping it like that for now.
Thank you very much, Jimmy, and that meeting will be the fifth Friday. Or second, first, third Friday.
Third Friday of every month. Starting next week, so that'll be the seventeenth. That'll be our first meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And to back up just a minute. Mr. Campbell just refreshed my, uh, deadline and it does say January twenty-fourth is our application deadline. Not the seventeenth, is that correct? Yes. Thank you from the back of the room. Okay, um, parental plan. Dr. Warner?
Yes. This is Tammy here. So we have three people on our committee. We've got Melissa Schumate, we've got Jason Tuck, and I missed that third name. And we are working on creating a webpage for parents and families. And we are currently, uh, working on publishing that. And once the committee has got that where we want it, then we will bring that to the board, uh, for a vote before we actually publish it, publish it to make it live. Um, and then we are hoping that we will have, uh, that ready to go, uh, and I believe we will, uh, for the board to review it by the next board meeting. And so we're excited about that. And then.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Warner, we appreciate that. Anybody have any questions for Tammy? Ray?
This is Ray. I just have a general question. So I know, I know a lot of us on the board are also sitting on different committees and most of our committee meetings are open, but uh, we don't always have a calendar invite for each committee. So I'm wondering, is it possible, you know, to have a forty-eight hour notice before a committee meeting or, or something, just so we can have something on our calendar to be like, oh yes, we can go to this committee meeting or, or not. Because sometimes, you know, it might get an email a couple of weeks before, but there's no calendar reminder for that. So it would be nice if we could have a calendar invite. Just in just for each committee meeting.
And this is Tanya. Are you asking that all board members get the invitation, whether they're on the committee or not? Like more members who are not on the committee?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm gonna share that also.
Okay, and the next, uh, committee we have is the Residential Life Committee. And since that's mine, I'm glad to talk about it. We have, uh, set up a meeting schedule for the third Thursday of each month at two o'clock in person in the large conference room in main building. I am thrilled with this group. They are very enthusiastic. They've got wonderful ideas. And I think, uh, we're going to see some real positive things come out of this committee. So, um, we are working on developing a curriculum for the residential program. And, uh, um, we actually have a sample to go from. Thanks very much to Carol Bailey, who has used this before. So, uh, we're excited about that. And with that, Ms. White, academic?
Um, the curriculum committee met for Christmas. We had a large number of, um, representatives from each school, elementary, middle and high school, um. And we have very good conversation, a very easy, open conversation about, um, curriculum. And we are meeting again. They, the, the assignment was from the, the meeting to go back to get more people from each school group to discuss, uh, what their needs were as far as curriculums, any new curriculums or different curriculums that they might be aware of, that they might be interested in. And we are going to meet again on January the twenty-fourth, which is a mandatory workday. We have not set a standing time to meet because it just kind of depends on when there's available, like either on a Friday afternoon or on a workday. So you're just kind of being loose with our meetings. Uh, whenever we can grab the time, we will. But right now, our next meeting is January the twenty-fourth. And they were so responsive and so helpful and I look forward to seeing them again.
Uh, Dr. Warner, Admissions Committee? Policy Committee?
So this is Tammy. So the meeting, yeah, give me just one second. Hang, oh, this is, is interpreter okay? Hang on just one minute. Okay, so the Admissions Committee had their first meeting yesterday and we will be meeting monthly the second Wednesday of each month. Uh, it was a great meeting.
Dr. Todd led.
Dr. Todd led it and led that meeting and.
Dr. Lindsay.
Dr. Lindsay.
Yeah. Dr. Lindsay gave some background, um, about early
Hearing detection.
Hearing detection, early intervention and so with available services and available services that are approved. So it's, there's a lot of enthusiasm. And as, as we continue to, um, look at the goals for early intervention and
Outreach.
Outreach. And we want the school really, you know, to identify the babies and have those babies here. You know, uh, the hospitals, the clinics, you know, allowing them to, uh, for us find ways to reach out to them so that the babies who are deaf would have the possibility of being here. So we'll work with the marketing committee, but if you all have got, uh, ideas and they're going to have some, the committee's going to have some ideas, uh, or issues that, if you've got issues you think that are coming up, or if you've got proposals, that's, those are the kinds of things that we are looking for and we're looking at finances, positions. We may have some resources from Gallaudet that we can tap into, uh, because of their early intervention program. But we, but we're hoping that on the national level, that is expanding and there's a lot of enthusiasm in that area with early intervention and hearing detection.
We're looking to have our report to you in March.
So our report should be to you in March and we should have that and we are very excited about presenting that report to you in March.
Thank you very much. Those are exciting topics, very much so. Um, and, um, we have covered our old business, uh, the committee meeting schedule and update. We've had an update on our superintendent search. Um, so, but before we, uh, entertain a motion to go into closed session, I'm going to take a wild stab at something. Mr. Farmer, are you online with us? There's a person on here with just numbers. Uh, and I had a suspicion that might be Mr. Farmer from the Eastern Schools Board of Trustees, so, uh. If so, I was going to welcome you, but it's okay. All right, I will take them. Uh, I do want to say something before we do go to a session. The group that's, the attendance here today is wonderful. Please encourage parents, other staff members and folks to come in. Uh, we're trying to keep you informed through a newsletter, but it's always nice to be at the meetings. So thank you very much for coming today. We appreciate it. Uh, do I have a motion for us to go to closed session?
Motion, quickly.
Yes, please.
This is Chris. The motion being presented to General Statute Room forty-three, three eighteen, A one, to discuss confidential personnel matters under General Statutes, Chapter one fifteen C and Chapter one thirty-two, and also to discuss confidential student matters under the Federal Education Rights Privacy Act and under subsection A three to discuss matters protected by the Attorney-client Bureau.
Thank you. Could I get a salute for that? An amen?
Uh, Jimmy, so moved. So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please, take it down by raising your hand. And at this time, we will go into closed session. Thank you very much, folks.
Board members.
Okay, we have three positions. I'm just guessing to vote on for higher one. Do you want to vote all three together or do we need to take a second?
All, all three again.
Um, do I have a motion for, do we vote again?
I mean, I, I would. I'm moving to go for all three positions. It has ran, I'm sorry, uh, I, there was, um, window on leaving is green.
And Tammy's asking, are we in open session like?
Yes, we are in open session. Uh, do you have a vote again?
And Tammy says.
Uh, I was just going to make the motion in that we have some reasons to be, remember everybody's name, but I'm just skipping.
So Tammy just made a motion to prove all, to prove all, goes right in, goes right in.
I know one was the Alpinian, she said, lessons like, and what was the third one?
Indiana. Indiana, that's my, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. People, I'm. Jimmy seconded. Jimmy seconded. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, well, that's fast. Analysts, do we have a motion to adjourn? I'm going to go ahead and make a comment. Do the other. So Amy seconded, Tammy seconded. All in favor, raise your hand. And a good job to say bye.
I think I can say amen at that point.
And Ray said, enjoy the snow and his feet. The college just sent us an email and said, uh, no classes tomorrow, but cancel class for.